I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of July 7, 2020. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Moats. Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. Thank you very much. Our first item, this is a presentation of the Hometown Heroes. Mr. Posada. Good evening. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for allowing me the time to come and present our latest class in the Hometown Heroes. You know, this program was started several years back, and we've been able to recognize many of our local veterans and active-duty personnel in the program. This last class will serve for the summer. And what we're looking at doing this year is probably taking a little break, trying to go out and publicize to the community that the program is available. We'll probably be coming back with a new program sometime in the spring of '21. We've been at this since 2016. Our partners are the American Legion and the Veterans of Foreign Wars. They've been helping us recognize our veterans and reaching out to families. Tonight, we have a great group of individuals to recognize. The idea behind the program has been to remind the community about the sacrifices that our hometown heroes have made. We have recognized individuals in all branches of the military throughout the program. So for the next six months on College Drive, this class of heroes will be presented. Because we weren't able to have our families present tonight, what we asked them to do was to write us a little paragraph about their individual that we're recognizing tonight to give the council and the community a little bit of a flavor of these individuals. So first off, a face that might be familiar to some of us here at the city is Lieutenant Colonel Antonio Galván. Tony, as he's known around the city for many years, began his career in the military in 1951 in the Korean War. He was in the 82nd Airborne Division of the Army. He was discharged in 1954 as a Staff Sergeant and entered the California National Guard. He eventually oversaw the 1st Battalion, 144th Military Artillery Division units in Santa Maria, Santa Barbara, Ventura, and Oxnard. While serving in the National Guard, he was one of the commanding officers during the civil unrest in Los Angeles in the Watts. And in his younger military career, Tony was also an avid boxer and won several titles as a boxer. Simultaneously, Tony worked for the city of Santa Maria for 39 years and ultimately retired in the position of Street and Sewer Superintendent in 1994. Tony was married to Juanita Farrell in 1954, and their legacy consisted of five children, nine grandchildren, and 11 grandchildren, and 63 years of marriage before he passed. Tony showed love and support for and strength beyond our imagination to his children, family, and friends, neighbors, employees, and community. Behind our strong soldier was even a stronger family who stood by him, supported him, and loves him with all their hearts. Thank you, Dad, for all the years you gave the country, the city, and your family. And just on a personal note, you know, I had the opportunity to work with Tony for many years as Street and Sewer Superintendent. Outstanding man, a great leader, always trying to find a solution for something. So he's sorely missed when he passed. Next, we have Edward Verdugo. Oh, and I'm sorry. Tony was nominated by Christina Martinez, his daughter. And we have Edward Verdugo, and Edward is nominated by Christina Martinez, his daughter-in-law. And Eddie joined the Army in 1955 as a young man to support the cleanup after the Korean War with an honorable discharge as Private First Class. Some people live their entire lives and wonder if they've made a difference. Today, we honor a brave man who defended our Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. We honor his personal courage to face fear and danger and adversity through that time. We honor his life and love of his wife, Margie, eight children, numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren and great-great-grandchildren. Today, in this small token, his family wishes to recognize Grandpa Eddie and that he made a difference. Thank you, Grandpa Eddie. Richard Hawkins, Air Force and Marine Corps. He was nominated by Kyle Hawkins, his grandson. Richard started in the Marines in 1954 during his training at Camp Pendleton and doing a couple of tours overseas in Japan. He left the Marines in 1957 and immediately started in the Air Force, where he served across the country at several Air Force bases for the next 17 years, and finally retired as Senior Master Sergeant from Vandenberg Air Force Base in 1974. Richard has lived in Santa Maria since his Air Force retirement. His family is humbled that he is being recognized as a hometown hero and very proud of him and his service to his country and to let them be their hero. Nestro Valles, U.S. Army, nominated by Jesse Goan, a friend. I don't have any notes for Mr. Valles. Next, we have William Tran, U.S. Marine Corps, is nominated by Vin Tran, his father. William, Billy Tran enlisted in the Marines in 2017. He is now Corporal and Vehicle Commander of a light armored vehicle, providing missile support for his battalion. He loves to swim and was a lifeguard at the Paul Nelson Aquatic Center in 2017. Because of his fondness of the water, Billy attended the Marine Corps -- I'm sorry, Billy attended the Marine Corps Instructor for Water Survival Course, which he passed and is now a certified instructor in water survival. Billy plans to major in aviation and one day fly helicopters. Benjamin Delgado, U.S. Army, he is nominated by the Midcoast Volunteer Veterans Alliance. Benjamin Delgado was born on September 30, 1924, in Beteravia, California. He began his schooling in a two-room schoolhouse in Beteravia and completed his formal schooling at Santa Maria High School. He started his employment history as a warehouseman at Union Sugar Company prior to his induction in March of 1943. His actual entry into active service was April 1, 1943, at the Presidio in Monterey. His basic training occurred at Camp Callahan near Torrey Pines, La Jolla, and advanced training at Fort Irwin near Barstow. He was assigned to the 124th Anti-Aircraft Artillery Gun Battalion. He and his unit sailed across the Atlantic in 1944 and landed in England and completed their service in the European Theater of Operations. He participated in the following battles and campaigns: the Ardennes, the Rhineland, and Central Europe. He was Honorable Discharge on the 15th of January, 1946, at the Separation Center at Fort MacArthur in San Pedro, California. PFC Benjamin Delgado passed away June of 2008 and was proud of his WWII military service and the love for his country, the United States of America, and the flag, and represented what it stood for. Philip Hernandez, U.S. Army, also nominated by the Midcoast Veterans Alliance. We don't have any notes on Mr. Hernandez. We want to thank our nominating groups that took the time and individuals to bring their hero to us and give us an opportunity as a community to recognize them. As we mentioned before, these banners will be put up on Long College, and we hope to get that done next week. And we want to thank the families that have participated since 2016 in the program. It's awakening to see the heroes that we have in our community. You know, there's just things we just don't know about people, and we get a chance to bring this out. So thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, very much. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Posada? Thank you very much. And it's such a great program, and we will have a couple of people there when you're hanging the banners too, Alex, so just let me know. Our next item is a proclamation, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is in honor of Pride Month, whereas the city of Santa Maria has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people. And whereas many residents who contribute to the enrichment of Santa Maria are part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community, and whereas significant advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of the LGBTQ+ persons throughout the nation and around the world, it is important for cities like Santa Maria to stand up and show support for our residents who are still affected by discrimination and bigotry. And whereas June is recognized as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in many cities across the United States and has become a symbolic month in which the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and gender nonconforming community and its supporters come together in various celebrations of pride to commemorate the Stonewall riots when LGBTQ+ people rose up and fought against discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas in the movement towards equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and gender nonconforming persons, it is important now more than ever to make pride accessible for all people during the COVID-19 pandemic, especially people of color, in an effort to keep the community from feeling all alone due to the stay-at-home order. This year, celebrations will continue, however, they continue virtually in observing social distancing. Now, therefore, the Mayor, Alice Patino, of the city of Santa Maria hereby recognizes the month of June 20 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Santa Maria and urges all residents and businesses to respect the entire community and build a culture that strives for equity and equality for all people.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. And Madam Mayor, staff received written correspondence today from Carrie Oberly and Debbie Jonas expressing concern that the fireworks were worse than ever this year. Cliff Solomon, Audie McDonald, Gerardo Lorenz, and Hazel Davalos wrote in asking that the council revise the H2A housing ordinance to require growers to take extra measures to prevent the spread of COVID-19. And we have seven people lined up to speak. So we'll start with Claire Weinman. Claire, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I was actually looking to speak on item 4A.
Okay.
If that would be possible.
That would be fine, then I will mute you. Next person is Connie Ford. Connie, can you hear us? Well, the next person we have is Hazel Davalos. Hazel?
Hi.
There you are. Hi, Hazel.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Hazel Davalos, Organizing Director with CAWS, based here in Santa Maria. I've been alarmed by the growing rate of cases here, and it's concerning that over 25% of cases in the city are agricultural workers. My organization, in partnership with MYCOP, the Native-Eco-Indigenous Community Organizing Project, sent a joint statement to the Board of Supervisors last week because we fear things could get much worse, especially for farmworkers, if the county and city don't act quickly. We ask county supervisors, Public Health Department, and Agricultural Commission to take steps to increase regulation of the agricultural industry. Ag is the largest employer of essential workers in our county, and if we're going to get serious about stopping workplace transmission of the virus, this is the first place you should look. I have forwarded the statement to you because the city of Santa Maria has an important role to play here. Last week, there was a major outbreak in Ventura County where 176 workers out of 200 H2A workers housed at a Ryder-owned facility tested positive for COVID-19. This shouldn't come as a surprise when you have that many people living in dormitory style houses. The risk is great. I come today to ask you all a heat this morning. Two of the company's housing workers at the facility, Elkhorn and Royal Oak, both have operations in Santa Maria. And as you know, Santa Maria is one of the number-one destinations for H2A workers in the state. We are literally at the same time bomb. Aside from H2A, it's important to note the role agriculture plays in general in regards to COVID-19 spread. We have heard from workers that initial safety precautions have been lacked. We were recently contacted by workers at a packing house in Guadalupe, residents of Santa Maria, who learned of positive COVID cases amongst coworkers. They requested better screening and temperature checks, and the company's response was to tell workers that they didn't like to take the leave and be easily replaced. When workers aren't getting clear direction from employers about how to stay safe and are even retaliated again when they reject the standards, we have a problem. It's critical that the industry does its part to slow the spread. Due to low wages, farmworkers often have to live in crowded housing and carpool to work. This means that if a worker gets sick on the job, they risk going back home and infecting even more people. We must do all we can to stop workplace transmission in the field and packing houses. One suggestion for you as a council and how you can make a difference is revising your H2A housing farmer for ordinance. You could amend this policy to say that when a grower applies for a permit to house more than six H2A workers in an R1 zone, that they must provide a COVID-safety protocol plan. Have a public health officer walk through their facility prior to housing workers there and require that employers test H2A workers as soon as they arrive in the community. Taking these steps right away is crucial. We have approximately 2,000 H2A workers in the city, and many companies bring in a new group of workers for the fall harvest. We need you to act now. Thank you.
So our next speaker has a phone number that ends in 207. Caller, if you would like to say anything, if your phone number ends in 207, can you So we have another person on the line, Kate Adams. Kate, are you there?
I'm here.
Yes.
I wanted to speak about the pandemic. About the pandemic we are facing across the world, across the nation, and here in Santa Maria. I have heard the positive message that, as in other crises we have faced, we are all in it together. I think that's true, and it gives me confidence in our ability to come out of this. However, are we really all in it together? I think that some of us, more than others, are in it. Frontline workers are in it, more than others. And I fear that the largest group of frontline workers in our city, ag workers, have been left behind. I worry about the county and the city's response to the alarming uptick in infections in Santa Maria in general, but particularly among ag workers. Demonizing or ignoring immigrant communities who are suffering a different pandemic than I am fosters widespread public health problems for all of us. They are not separate from us. They are part of us. We are all in it together. Somebody said to me recently, "There are some decades when nothing happens, and then there are some weeks when decades happen." This strikes me as a good way of thinking about and feeling about the pandemic we have all been facing since March. Events here in the city of Santa Maria and California in general are overtaking us, and the public health crisis that we face must mean that city government, county health officials, and all of us think about what it means that we are all in it together and whether or not we are leaving out those who are more in it than us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Leslie McGorman. Leslie, are you there?
I'm here.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry we can't be there in person, but I'm glad that you took the precaution to table that idea, to continue to meet in person again or resume, rather. I also want to speak about the pandemic, and I think as well as most people who are attending the meeting tonight, I'm really alarmed by the ever-increasing number of cases and the seeming inaction of it. I look forward to the later presentation, and I hope that I am disproven in this assumption. I want to go back to, way back, to March 20, when the city's PIO tweeted a message from the police department to refrain from reporting frustration with others outside during the state's home directive. I thought it was funny at the time, but since then, there hasn't been a single word about who to call to report businesses operating illegally or people not complying with the requirement to wear a face mask. Now, unfortunately, councilmembers, I'm going to ask without naming names if you can see yourselves in any of these statements. A member of this city council told a business owner, when asked when they could reopen, "Well, it doesn't matter because no one is doing enforcement." And then, as recently as June 1, at a public press event, another member of this council was not wearing a face mask in public and was not the requisite six feet away from others at a press conference. A third member of this council voted to preserve the staffing levels at our busiest fire station responding to COVID calls. The rest of you voted against that. So truly, how should the public interpret these actions? Should we interpret that the council wants to stop the spread of the virus, or maybe that you're just going through the motions of pretending you care? Certainly, I hope it's the former. Secondly, it's criminal to force the essential workers in our community to live 10 people to a single-family dwelling because there isn't enough affordable housing. Yet, in this meeting, in the materials for this meeting, you have again okayed over $538,000 of our city's budget to go to the advertising budget of the Chamber of Commerce. Again, this really outlines pretty clearly what the council's priorities seem to be. Now, we know the communities who make up our essential workforce are the same communities where we're seeing a balloon in the number of positive COVID cases, and we know how many growers are simply not providing a safe work environment, including sick time, nor are following the 10 pages of protocol required by the state of California. Now, we also know that in cases of exposure, in which quarantine is required but housing situations make it impossible, there are supposed to be hotel rooms available in which to isolate. These resources simply are not getting out into the community. And to be very, very frank with you all, if you cannot find the compassion to save the lives of the people you represent, then at least find the urgency to save this community from total collapse. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Our last speaker this evening is Shirley Donahue. Shirley, are you there? Madam Mayor, I believe that's all our speakers right now.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. Salwell, did you want to make any comments?
Sure. Madam Mayor, I hope the county health representatives were able to hear the public comment about the public health crisis and be able to respond to that during their comments in their presentation later on the agenda. But I can speak about the fireworks at this point and July 4, if the council would be interested on that. Yep, okay. So a lot of activity with the 4th of July and with fireworks, as we've heard and as we did hear on the 4th of July. So some summary information I can provide is that since June 1, we received over 1,100 calls about fireworks to our dispatch. Since June 17, we received 130 calls to our fireworks hotline. That's about double what it was the year before. The city received 16 complaints for the third-party administrative citations. That's about double than the year before as well. We issued 29 citations for possession of fireworks. Each citation has a $1,000 fine that the code does not provide for a lesser amount. So those are each $1,000 citations. We had 13 officers, including one supervisor and one dispatcher, assigned to the fireworks enforcement detail. And then during the 24-hour period of 4th of July itself, we had the highest call-for-service volume in recent memory, 53 fire department responses as well. And we had 202 fireworks-related calls from concerned residents on the 4th of July, 27 EMS calls for service, so emergency medical calls, four grass fires, three dumpster fires, three public assists, one vehicle fire. And we had a report of one walk-in injury at Marion Medical Center for a victim with burns on their hand. And we did have our fireworks booths, and even though the formula the code provides for up to 36 booths, we had only 26 that applied and sold fireworks through the booth process. And our outreach, again, was very strong and forward, again, as it had been in prior years. The fireworks campaign was coordinated out of the city manager's office with the public information manager. It included 22,000 bilingual utility billing mailers to every household explaining the city's fireworks rules and regulations, 15,000 bilingual half-page flyers about fireworks at each of the fireworks booths. We had a full-page ad run in the ZIP codes for the region. We had 345 showings on three televised public service announcements on TV, five times a day from June 11 through July 5. 268 radio ads in English and Spanish on four radio stations. The main theme there is that fireworks and people in the community and pets don't mix. And that was a shared cost with the county. The city and county arranged for residents to pick up pet crates on loan from the Foster Road Shelter. We did a number of news releases, a number of interviews with the TV stations about fireworks rules and the city's effort to enforce those, numerous social media postings. Again, we offered the yard signs for folks and bilingual fireworks posters. So the campaign, the outreach, we estimated about over $4,000. And so it was a busy 4th of July, and we were busy enforcing our rules and making sure people were safe as well. That's all I have.
You know, I have a comment in regard to that.
Ms. Waterfield?
I remember last June, and we were trying to figure out a way of how to decrease the amount of fireworks, and everyone had suggestions. But one of the suggestions was that we should stop the city doing their own fireworks show and making sure that we don't have a public fireworks. And this year, we didn't have that. And yet, we had more incidences this year than we did last year. So that doesn't work. The solution, I don't have the answer to that, but at least, you know, we eliminate that one step in regards to eliminating the public fireworks show.
Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would say that it would be wise, maybe, for the council to revisit this issue back again and to see if maybe there's other steps that we can take, or if maybe staff can give us other suggestions as to how we can better control the situation. And, I mean, to your point, Councilmember Waterfield, I honestly think it's, I think what a big role that plays into this is the culture that the city of Santa Maria has around fireworks. I mean, we are openly selling fireworks throughout the city of Santa Maria. I mean, I honestly think that a lot of it has to do with the culture that we have created here, and so I don't know what it's going to take for us to undo that.
Yeah, that is on, you know, another subject in that, but if you stop selling the legal fireworks, you're not going to stop the illegal fireworks. We can't even do it with drugs. We can't even do it with, you know, things that are legal. So, all we're doing is stopping nonprofits from making a living for a solid year. But that's on another subject, so.
Yeah. Okay. I know in, for two years, I think we had a task force that came up with, we had a task force from the public that came up with what we're doing right now, and that's what the city adopted. And maybe go back to the task force, and I know there's people that have called in that are really interested and asked me if they'd like to serve on that task force. This year, I heard they're, it was like bombs, and I don't know if there was even a puff of smoke that came out of them. All they did was make a loud noise. They didn't have any color or anything in the air, so I don't know where that was coming Places that don't sell fireworks have the same problems we do throughout the state. And I know Chief Hanson and Chief Champion can speak to that because that's something we've always thought about, too. So, I don't know what, anyway, this might be a good idea to maybe assemble that task force, again, adding some of these people that may have solutions. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
The following routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single-agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll-call vote with one motion, and these items are discussed only on request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
I just have an item that I just need clarification on, and that would be item 3E. Those are the operating agreements. And on the first page, the pink sheet on the back, where it shows the organizations that are receiving money, Museum of Flight, I thought they were going to be funded because they submitted a letter, and so what happened there?
So, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Waterfield, that was, as we discussed in the budget hearing, we will bring that back with the other request for economic development as we revise our revenue figures. So, we thought we could either do it in the first quarter or the mid-year as we see how things progress. But yeah, they did submit information that seems to show that they can comply with the contract if we were to provide them one, and seems as though they'll be able to fulfill the financial disclosure requirement in the future.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying that for me. You're right, I forgot that. You did state that, and that is correct. And if there isn't any other...
Okay. Now, Ms. Wyman wanted to speak on what item?
Four. No, that's the, yeah, that's the last one. If there's not any other questions, I'd like to go ahead and make a recommendation to adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Having heard a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Harry Nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield. Aye. Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive an update regarding the coronavirus situation.
Mr. Stilwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Would you like to do the introductions? Thank you.
Typically, when we have these, we do provide some initial statistical information, but that information is, we derive that from public health, so we'll forego that this evening and turn this item over to our health advisors. We have Santa Barbara County Public Health here tonight to present the update of their information for the city of Santa Maria. And then, we have Sue Anderson from Marion Medical Center here as well to provide information on the COVID impacts at our regional health center in Santa Maria here.
Okay. And can I ask every council member if you have any questions, so they can give their presentation? If you have any questions, then we'll do the questions at the end, so we can go down the line on the questions. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. And as we're getting in with, I think we have Von DeRinozo here from Santa Barbara County Public Health. As she's introducing her item, I can also mention that we have established the city's response team to be able to coordinate our efforts in the city of Santa Maria. We've been having our emergency operations center in place since the emergency was announced in March, and we've now reformed that into a response team for actual boots on the ground, coordinating the effort out in our community. And we also have, we continue to work, try to work with the county on receiving data so we can coordinate those efforts, and I think you'll hear tonight from public health that they are seeking to further coordinate those efforts. And it's important for us to get information like COVID hotspots, known addresses, when we do send our, any of our folks, whether it's a building inspector, a firefighter, a police officer, that we know what we're getting into and being able to provide the best health outcome for everyone involved. So, I can turn it over to Von, if she's on the line.
Can I just, um, sorry, is the slide, or do you want me to... So, can I, um, sorry, is the slide, or do you want me to... And next? Next, I'd like to, uh, to give you an update on, first, the area of COVID events in the city. Next, the city of Democratic City, the current effort that the county is undertaking and recognizing. Next. So, here is a graph that compares the case status in all counties. As you can see, we have 2,665 total cases in the county. So, if you look at the 14 days spread, beginning on June 22nd till July 6th, we have a 49% increase in cases. Uh, what you see as a solid black line on Tuesday, we know that, and that's the most new data, which is what is used to expose and database that use for case investigation. We are now using that space, uh, database for contact tracing efforts. Next. This graph describes the new cases of past two weeks, city by city. And as you can see, Santa Maria is top of the charts with the red line. And this data is, if you look at the past 14 days, during the period from June 25th till July 6th, there is a 73% increase. If you take the two counts today, uh, data as of yesterday, the number has increased to 84% increase over the same criteria.
I've often get asked for specific data according to the geographic area, and I'd like to invite you to visit our website, publichealthSBC.org. This data is available and is updated on a daily basis. So, when I created this live on July 2nd, this was the data that was posted. And as you can see, you could get data by geographic area, the daily cases, the total confirmed cases, the recovered by region, as well as the active cases by region, and the number of deaths attributed to the area as well. And again, that website is publichealthSBC.org. So, I'd like to, the bulk of my presentation is to share with the city council our retrospective survey of Santa Maria cases. Next. The background is, the first cases of COVID-19 in Santa Barbara County were identified in North County, and over the past several months, Santa Maria has seen elevated rates of COVID-19 as I just showed you. In order to better understand the situation in Santa Maria, the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department analyzed available data on the confirmed cases. As you can see from this map, the higher incidence of cases are in the corridors along north of Bedaravia and west of Broadway. As you know, these neighborhoods typically have apartment complexes and residences with crowded living situations. There are also more congregate setting in this area as well, including skilled nursing facility, long-term care facilities, shelters, treatment, and recovery facilities. As you can also see, the lower incidence of cases are south of Bedaravia and spread out into the other higher-income neighborhoods, less-dense neighborhoods. We achieved the sources from cases who agreed to be interviewed. Total confirmed cases with demographic data, and this does not include inmates, was 344. Total confirmed cases identified in the Santa Maria area is 134, and the rest of the cases are non-Santa Maria cases at 210. So, this provides the context for the information that I'm about to share. As you can see from this graph, Latino and Hispanic cases are overrepresented by 38% when compared to non-Santa Maria cases. And in this graph, when compared to Santa Barbara County population, Latino and Hispanic cases are overrepresented by 42%. This graph describes the age comparison, and again, there were 134 Santa Maria cases interviewed and 210 non-Santa Maria cases interviewed. We see that in the age group of 18 to 29, there's a difference of 17% with Santa Maria cases leading. Again, in the 30 to 49 age category, we see Santa Maria cases leading and by 7%. Conversely, in the 50 to 69 age category, we see Santa Maria having a 16% less than non-Santa Maria cases. And in the 70-plus age group, we see a significant decrease among Santa Maria cases at 1% versus the 10% for non-Santa Maria cases. Next. With regards to gender comparison, we see hardly any difference between the males and the female cases in the two populations. Next. Primary language comparison. We see that among the cases who identified English as their primary language, there's a 24% difference, with Santa Maria cases having the lower. Conversely, cases who have identified Spanish as their primary language, Santa Maria cases lead by 22%. Next. Education level comparison. We see that college graduate, which is four or more years of college, there's a significant difference among Santa Maria cases at 5% in comparison, that would be 18% for non-Santa Maria cases. So, there's a 13% difference. Again, with graduate degree, and this is described as master's or doctorate, we see an 8% difference between the Santa Maria cases and the non-Santa Maria cases. Annual household income comparison, next. We see that, if you look at the 75,000 to 99,999, we see that 57% of Santa Maria cases are in these categories versus the 43% for non-Santa Maria cases. Household size comparison. When we look at the household sizes of 4, 5, 6, and 7, we see that 73% of Santa Maria cases identify having household sizes in these categories versus the 40% in non-Santa Next. When we look at occupation of our cases, we see that in Santa Maria, 20% identified as being in the ag industry. So, this is singularly a sector that is the highest, but that does not denote the remaining 80% spread out between healthcare and patient care, housekeeping and landscaping. Next. Sales and retail, salon, massage, and as well as unemployed slash disabled. Next. We were able to obtain additional occupation information through our case investigation, and these were additional information that during the course of our disease control investigation, staff were able to elicit additional information. So, we were able to denote that countywide, 18% of our cases as of June 11th... So we were able to denote that countywide, 18% of our cases as of June 11th represent ag workers, whereas in Santa Maria, Guadalupe, and Orket, that number hovers around 26%. Next. When we look at health insurance comparison, we see that Santa Maria cases lag behind non-Santa Maria cases within the private insurance category by 18%. In public insurance, the number is higher with Santa Maria cases. In the no insurance category, Santa Maria cases lead by 14%. Next. Healthcare provider comparison. We noted that of our cases, of our Santa Maria cases, 27% said, "I don't have a healthcare provider I can see." So they may be insured, but they don't have a healthcare provider, that they can obtain services. And this is, there's a 10% difference as compared to non-Santa Maria cases. Next. When we look at knowledge of the coronavirus comparison, we see that 81% of Santa Maria cases identified as having somewhat knowledgeable, moderate knowledgeable, or is extremely knowledgeable about the coronavirus. Next. Knowledge of hand washing comparison. We see that both non-Santa Maria cases and Santa Maria cases understand the importance of regular hand washing and was able to practice it. Next. Knowledge of social distancing comparison. We see that 70% of Santa Maria cases identified as understanding social distancing, meaning keeping six feet apart, and was able to practice it. However, if we look at the left-hand side, there's 24% needing additional information or capacity. We also asked whether the cases were able to practice social distancing at home. And Santa Maria, 72% of our Santa Maria cases said yes. When we asked, "Was social distancing possible and practice at work?", we see 52% of Santa Maria cases saying yes, with non-Santa Maria cases having a lower capacity. Next. So what does the data show us? So here are some brief findings that I'd like to share. That Latinos and Hispanics in Santa Maria represent a disproportionately higher number of cases compared to their representation in the Santa Barbara County population and in comparison to non-Santa Maria cases. When compared to non-Santa Maria cases, our Santa Maria cases, one, have a higher percentage of household size between four and seven individuals; two, have more cases who were uninsured, and with less cases with private insurance; and three, are more likely to understand and practice social distancing at work and at home. Current efforts, next. I'd like to share with you our current efforts that is in partnership with others. So, one, the Public Health Department is in partnership to increase health insurance coverage and access to healthcare from the get-go. When the Public Health Department learned that there were Santa Maria community members who could not get tested or who could not get treatment due to costs, we opened all of our healthcare centers to be able to test and treat Santa Maria community members who don't have insurance at zero cost. We've partnered with others to increase prevention messaging. We have partnered with community members to increase distribution of face coverings, of health information. We've also partnered up with our employers on preventive measures. Some of that includes partnering up with growers on the prevention messaging, and the ag conditioner, I know, have distributed N95s. In addition to that, our current prevention messaging and efforts include us engaging AmeriCorps Vista volunteers and Promethores in North County for targeted outreach to both general community members as well as the business sector. And we continue to engage the Santa Maria communities in strategies to decrease the spread of disease like we are today. In addition to that, earlier, I heard a public comment about isolation and quarantine. From the beginning of our response effort, we have set aside isolation and quarantine facilities to offer a safe space for community members who cannot do isolation and quarantine at home, and we continue to do that as we work with both the community advocacy groups, the community members themselves, as well as business sectors who've reached out to I'd like to talk a little bit about the outreach efforts. So part of the containing the disease is making sure that all members of the community get the information, know about the resources available. We, from the get-go as well, from our initial cases in Santa Maria, we stood up the Latin Act and Indigenous Migrant COVID-19 Response Task Force. And this was built upon our previous relationship with UCSB and various community groups such as MYCOP and CAUS. We began, the task force officially began with our first meeting on March 24th, and it is comprised of numerous community members, government entities, community members, healthcare representatives throughout the county interested in supporting Santa Maria. The efforts of the task force is guided by a steering committee comprised of CAUS, MYCOP, the Santa Barbara Public Health Department, UCSB, and El Centro. The task force has recently formed two working groups, and that is the Mental Health Working Group and the Farm Worker Working Group. And the primary focus of these two work groups is to do outreach and education, ensuring that members of the Santa Maria community with mental health issues and in the farm working community dealing with COVID-19 can get linked to services that they need. Because of our efforts on this task force, with numerous support from the members of the task force, we were able to create public health videos in indigenous languages and disseminate them in various venues. We were able to also obtain community grants to support the work. I want to acknowledge that the UCSB students, undergrads, and graduate, and some faculty members have supported this effort through doing data gathering, data analysis for socially determinants of health in the Santa Maria area. And lastly, the Public Square Equity Effort, which is a recent project consisting of 15 interns with 10 language capacity, and sponsored by Supervisor Dos Williams and Steve Lavignino, and they are supporting outreach efforts in the Santa Maria area. In addition to the Latin Act and Indigenous Migrant COVID-19 Response Task Force, reading the disparities, reading the enormous cases in other jurisdictions, we were concerned as well for the cases and the experience in our Black American and Asian American communities. We have initiated outreach efforts and are in conversations with leaders from these two communities on how we can improve our outreach and education efforts. In addition to these two previously stated efforts, we also have started meeting with growers and farm worker advocacy groups to jointly partner on outreach and education in this sector. In addition to that, we have ensured that in addition to the Santa Maria testing sites sponsored by the state, supported by the Public Health Department, we also have done weekend testing in Guadalupe and Cuyama. And we, those were very successful events in partnership with healthcare partners and community partners and cities. And we hope that these will serve as model as we begin to do additional community testing. Next. Our recommendations. We have a few recommendations for your city council to consider. With all of the outreach efforts, with all the education and case management efforts in Santa Maria, one of the recommendations that we'd like to suggest, to put forth, is coordination of services and efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. So forming a work group led by the city to develop strategies, local strategies that make sense, that can amplify and leverage the resources that currently exist. So this would, the work group would consist of city, county, and community partnerships, and again, to leverage the resources and capacity. The second recommendation is around education and enforcement activities. And this would be a city, county, and again, community partnership to provide education to the community as well as to the business sectors on how to create safe space both for the employees and the public. And I know that there has been some confusion about health officer orders, who enforces it. And I'd like to share with you that Health and Safety Code 101029 provides broad authority for both the sheriff and every peace officer of every political subdivision of the county, meaning Santa Maria Police, to enforce local health officer orders concerning COVID-19. So that gives you the legal authority to support the county's efforts, and in particular, enforcing the local health officer orders. Next. And that concludes my report. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank my EPI team for individuals who've worked tirelessly to be able to provide us the data that I just shared with you. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Renoso. Thank you for such a complete report. Dr. Moats?
Yes, Madam, I'd like to ask a question. So if a farm worker becomes sick with coronavirus and needs to be quarantined in the Santa Maria Valley, where are the facilities for the quarantine? Are we using hotels or?
Yes. Yes, we have various hotels, both in North County and in South County to be able to quarantine. So when we are aware of a case, whether that case is in, whether we have a confirmed lab report, and through our case investigation, we ask whether quarantining, isolation, and quarantine is possible. If it is not, then we make arrangements for the isolation and quarantine. Just today, it comes through another avenue. We know of a grower with some employees who have tested positive, and those employees heard the grower does not have isolation and quarantine facilities. So we assign our case manager to facilitate that process.
Ms. Soto?
Hi, Dr. DeReno. So thank you for your thorough report. My question is, I wasn't able to really capture it during the slide, but can you tell me, remind me what percentage of these COVID cases are workplace transmission?
I, let me see, and that would be in... So it's not necessarily workplace transmission. What we did in our retrospective study is our survey asked our cases, "Where do you work?", or "Can you share with us your place of employment or your sector of employment?"
And 11% of them were unemployed, correct?
Yes. So let me flip to that slide. Yes, 11% identified as unemployed, or "I can't work because I'm disabled."
Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes. I have a question, and it's, it has to do with the Senate Select Committee on California-Mexico Cooperation. They had a joint hearing, which was a special committee on the pandemic, on June 30th. And their concern concerns, I believe, everybody in the whole state of California.
Sorry, I can't really hear you. Can you, the sound is not coming through.
Okay, no. I'll start all over again. No, this has to do with a meeting that was conducted by the Senate Select Committee on the California-Mexico Cooperation, which happened on June 30th, and it was an emergency meeting. And in this meeting, they talked about California-Mexico border region, which has undoubtedly played a role in the profusion of COVID-19. While the state is flattening the curve in the aggregate, this is not the case for communities along the border. Rate of infections and hospitalizations have rapidly increased, and hospitals have been overwhelmed. This has, now, this is what's disturbing, is that this has resulted in the transferring of COVID-19 patients to other hospitals in the region and across the state of California. My question is, are we receiving any of those patients in the county of Santa Barbara?
I can definitively tell you that we accepted four patients from not Mexico, but from another county, Imperial County, and those patients have recovered and have been discharged. So during this whole timeframe, we've accepted only four, and they were not in North County.
Okay, because, and just keep a watch on it, because according to the Imperial Valley County website, there's just numerous patients there, and they live in the Brawley, Callexico, El Centro, Imperial Valley, and they're trying to find places for them to go to.
Right. And we are very aware of that. That is a function of public health. Our staff and in partnership with our hospitals are in discussion, and we know that our capacity is limited. and we know that our capacity is, is limited. And early on, when we took the four patients, we had more capacity. But being that we are on the state's watch list for capacity on and off, that is something that we are very, very concerned about. And to, I can confirm that there has not been any additional transfers into our county other than that four.
And how, and how did you release those four? Were they just released from the hospital on their own, and they had to find their way home? Or were they taken back to the region of where they came from?
And so I don't have that information. They were discharged from the hospital, and typically, a hospital discharge is in coordination with the, the point, the, the place from which the patient originated.
Okay, and we just need to make sure that they, you know, they get back to their places, because I've heard a lot of them have been discharged and just left out on the street, not knowing how to get back to where they came from. And so that was a big concern as well.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned something earlier in your presentation about people going for testing and not having the money to pay for it. I thought the testing was done at no cost. And how are we handling that? Are we making sure that these people are cared for?
Sure, so early, before the state testing sites came to our county, and by the way, it is free at the state testing site in Santa Maria. Before then, early on in March, when the pandemic started, through the task force, we heard reports of, in particular, of Santa Maria residents not being able to afford the test or had, or were insured. So they may be sick, but not knowing whether they had COVID-19 or not. So because the county has five clinics, we were able to waive the cost and absorbed the, the cost and offered the Santa Maria residents the ability to test if they have symptoms, and if they do have COVID-19 or other symptoms or illness, be able to offer them treatment through our clinic. And so that was a commitment. We wanted to remove cost and insurance as a barrier, and we did that from the get-go, and we have continued to do so.
Okay, thank you. Do you know if this was like 200, 300 people? Or if this was like three or four or five people?
I don't have the data. I'm more than happy to go back and run the numbers and email that to Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you. I just think that would be kind of important, that if we've got, just to know how many cases we're talking about. If it's a handful of cases that's been handled back in March, then that's one thing. If it's hundreds of cases, then we probably need to know about it. Thank you very much.
Dr. Reynoso, this is Mayor Cantino. The testing that's being done at the Fair Park, how many people have we tested at R.L.B.'s Santa Barbara County residence?
I don't have that information at the tip of my fingers, and I'm not techy enough to go move out of my current screen to go into my data. And Mayor, that is something, that is data that we do have. Unfortunately, it is in another file. If it's okay with you, I will email that information after this meeting.
Okay, fine. And do you know if they are just Santa Barbara residents that are being tested?
They have, it's Santa Barbara. It, I believe there is close to the, because Santa Maria site, there are Santa Barbara residents, there are, I mean, there are Santa Barbara County residents in Santa Maria at the Santa Maria site, as well as Mattering of Slow County residents. Just like we know that there are Santa Maria residents who are testing in other parts of the county, in South County, as well as in Slow. So it's a pretty fluid residency in a particular city in where the testing site is located is not a requirement.
Because people complain to me that it so, takes so long to get tested here, they're going up to Grover Beach, and it's, it's quicker to be tested.
I, I have heard that as well.
Like, you're, I think it's, is it a week out or two weeks out?
You know, it really depends. I know that from my data earlier in the week, Santa Barbara is the most impacted at two weeks, I believe I heard, anywhere from five to six days in Santa Maria.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Moats?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I made an appointment about eight days ago to get the testing at the fairgrounds, and I'm going to get it done in two days. So it took me about a 10-day wait.
Okay.
I had a question, kind of a follow-up on Councilperson Waterfield's question about whether the COVID-19 infection is more likely to occur at the work site or after hours at the home site? Inasmuch as outdoor transmission seems to be a lot less, what with the wind blowing the particles away, and indoor transmission seems to be much more likely, my question is, which is it? The workplace or at home after the day's work is over, where people get the infection?
We have data where we, because it is community transmission, we, which means community transmission, the, the infected person really can't identify a, a source, where they've been, who they got, who they got the infection from. So we know that most, 99% of our transmission is community in combination with person-to-person contact. And so whether it is at home or whether it is at work, that is data that we have not teased out. Other than, other than congregate outbreaks where we can tie the healthcare worker or the staff at the congregate setting to be workplace.
Thank you, Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Dr. Reynoso, and you may not know this, but I'm going to ask it anyway, maybe Claire Wyman is still on the phone, she can listen to this question. But when it comes to the new H2A workers that have not come over the border, are they being tested for COVID as well? And what is the timing on that? Because they could be tested one day and then be exposed the next day. So I, I think that those testings need to be the 15-minute testing tests that they take before they cross the border. And then I have another follow-up question after that. Are you there? Dr. Reynoso, are you there?
I'm hearing static, I'm not hearing, I'm hearing.
Okay, the question is, is on the new H2A workers that cross the border, are they being tested before they come over? And I understand that they could be tested one day and get infected the next, next day. Which testing kits are they being used? Is it the 15-minute to reveal the, whether they do or don't have COVID? Or is it the two-day, three-day? Because that's very important as well. And then I have another follow-up question. And if Claire Wyman is on the phone, if you don't know that answer, she might be able to answer this when she does her public comment.
Yes, unfortunately, I am, I don't have that information about H2A testing as they cross the border.
Okay.
And what type of testing they take.
Okay, then my next question is, are the transportation buses, are they being disinfected as the workers get on and, and get off? As a, get onboard and debark?
And I, again, I'm familiar with the disinfection policy of the growers or the contractors in terms of transporting the workers.
So is this one of, is this one of the issues that you'll be working on in your communities? In your committees when you're with the ag people?
Yes, that is, we'd like to, we'd like to delve deeper into, into and identify brainstorm factors that, that, that we can address as a community.
And I would think that would be very important, and as an emergency case, since they do represent 26% of the COVID cases in Santa Maria, that's probably something that should have been done a few days ago. Thank you.
Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As, as, as we were going through. As we were going through your presentation, Dr. De Reynoso, it was alarming to see the demographics and also the breakdown of the workplace, and seeing that about 20-plus percent of those infected with COVID are in the ag industry. And so my question is, what policies is public health thinking of putting in place to protect not just folks in the ag industry, but all workers throughout Santa Barbara County? Because I've heard reports of residents saying that they are being threatened of being fired from their workplace for coming in sick, where if it's an agricultural worker, if one of them presents symptoms, that they tell the whole crew, the whole cuadria, to go home. Or even, for instance, in one of the packing companies, it, it, there was, there were talks about people coming down positive with COVID, but then when the workers were requesting for safety protocols to be in place, they were told by the employer, well, if you don't like it, go work somewhere else or, or leave. And so I think part of the conversation and the policymaking also needs to address worker rights and ensuring that employers are, are protecting the welfare and safety of their employees. And so what is public health doing to address that issue?
Sure, so I believe that my colleague, Kathy Fisher, our ag commissioner, is also on the call. So I can start with that, and perhaps Kathy can chime in. So what we, so that is a worrisome sector with, where we see that 20% to 26% can be attributed to ag workers. So we, when we met with, when we met with our agricultural advocacy group, we found that there were definitely fears that's common, fears of having medical bills stemming from COVID-19, fears of, of, of being hospitalized or receiving medical care that is not culturally or linguistically appropriate, worries about the lack of wage replacement, worries, as you mentioned, about being fired if the worker discloses illness, and then also worries about ICE, retribution from ICE, especially if we, we, they are in our isolation and quarantine. I think that these are some of the, oh, in addition to that, there's a, an opportunity to increase awareness of disease and infection and how to mitigate that, as well as continued conversations around social distancing. So, so given these, these worries from our advocacy group, we also convened and met with growers and had conversations with them about the outreach that's needed, about the, the workplace adherence that would discourage, discourage clustering, like having more bathrooms or more water stations, more shade, and offering time to do temperature screening and symptom checking, and working with public health and other community partners on the de-stigmatization of COVID-19 once a worker's been infected. And then always thinking about how do we partner to address the income replacement? And, and then again, messaging around messaging that is culturally and linguistically appropriate. So these were suggestions and input that we got, that we compiled from, from our, our meetings. And I think that our next step is adding members from the city council to our partnership so that in part, that collectively, city council members, county staff, as well as the ag sectors, as well as the community advocacy groups can jointly work together and come up with innovative and doable solutions to address the increasing cases in Santa Maria as a whole. And I think that these are broad enough that, yes, we need to focus on farmworkers and the ability to have safe environments at home and at work to, to, to stem the, the disease. But I also think it's important to note that there's the remaining 80% of Santa Maria community members that also need to hear about social distancing, about the critical importance of face covering and hand washing.
Right, and I mean, and to the question, I mean, to my question, I mean, going back to the question that I asked, I mean, it wasn't, I, I'm glad that these are conversations that are taking place with the ag commissioner and growers within the county of Santa Barbara. But when it comes to community spread, I was just at one of the local supermarkets here in Santa Maria on Friday doing some grocery shopping, and I noticed that there were employ, employees not wearing masks within the businesses. And so again, how are we ensuring, how are we keeping employers accountable for not upholding the recommendations of public health?
Right, that's a great question. I think, I think that we've done a lot of education. We, we ad nauseam. And I think that the time has come, and again, it's really, we have the messaging. We issued the health officer, we issued the health officer order. The state has issued health officer order. So it is really time for us to engage with city council, your, your code enforcement, as well as your law enforcement to support us in that enforcement action. I know that we, both the city and the county jurisdictions, we are receiving CARES dollars. And the governor has been very explicit about, about the ability to draw down those dollars based on compliance. And so we definitely want to partner up with city council to ensure that hand-in-hand, we can do the education and enforcement. So our outreach includes federal guidelines, certification process. But again, we need your support in upholding the certification as well as the enforcement piece.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Doctor, is there a recommended or an established protocol for dealing with an employee, a farmworker employee that has tested positive for coronavirus? And I realize that's a little bit maybe out of our jurisdiction, because the, most of the fields are in the county area. So there's probably some question as to whether or not, or what jurisdiction is going to have say-so over that. But is there an established protocol? And if there is, what is it? And if there isn't, is there a plan to be one?
Yes, there is established. Yes, there is established protocol, and I believe that our growers have access to that. And I also want to invite you to our website, which has a very clear and concise direction for employers, any employers, when their employee tests positive. But again, with regards to enforcement, it's not about whose jurisdiction, but again, because of Health and Safety Code 101029, which you have in the presentation, it does provide you as city with broad authority to support our local health officer and state health officer orders with regards to containment of the of the disease.
Mr. Watson, this is our city attorney.
Dr. Rinozo, I'm the city attorney. I'm also the chief code enforcement officer. And we have been receiving numerous complaints from your department for our investigation, which we have done. I would preface the first question with, how many citations on behalf of public health has the sheriff issued since COVID has been initiated?
I don't have that information. I'm more than happy to pursue that.
How many cases has the district attorney filed or initiated on behalf of the public health officer?
Good question. I can follow that up.
So the the request is for code enforcement or the local police department to initiate citations on behalf of the public health officer, for which thus far, I can tell you, the district attorney has filed no cases. And I'm aware of no citations issued by the sheriff, as well as public statements that no citations would be issued by the sheriff. And so what is your ask? We are investigating every COVID case you're sending to us. We are educating. But if you're asking us to perform citations, I guess my first question would be, how many public health nurses have been sent up here? And how many other county resources have been sent to assist us? Because we are following up. And and I have to admit, I'm, I'm holding myself back because I know how hard my five officers are working on this and have been since day one. And so I just question the fact that you provided us lots of statistics, but you provided us no actual response in your presentation this evening. So I guess I would ask, what is the county's response, rather than asking what the city's obligation is?
Sure. And I want to draw your attention. So the city of Santa Maria, if I have my statistics right, for every positive case that happened in your city, my county, we have investigated, we have deployed public health nurse to support that, we have engaged in nonprofits and healthcare system, business sector to support that. And so we have, our COVID-19 unit leader is in Santa Maria, our deputy health director is in Santa Maria, lives in Santa Maria, and so does our environmental health director, lives in Santa Maria. So we have done quite a bit in terms of providing education, in terms of walking the neighborhoods, the high-density living neighborhoods, to provide face coverings. We brought resources to the community, we brought health education, we brought testing. So we, I want to say from a public health perspective, we have done our due diligence and have focused on on Santa Maria quite a bit because of the burden of disease there.
With all due respect, and I appreciate everything the county has done. But just looking at the statistics you provided, you provided 134 responses from Santa Maria out of 1,515 cases, yet you provided 210 from non-Santa Maria cases out of 1,233 cases, which shows that there's a 17% contact tracing in non-Santa Maria cases and an 8% tracing based on your own data presented tonight out of Santa Maria cases, when we are purportedly the hotspot. So I do challenge in the sense that, what is the ask? If you're asking us to go out and cite people for mask violations under the order, or you're asking us specifically, what is the ask? Because as the person who is responsible for the, for the department that you are asking to do, I'd like to know directly and in front of my bosses, what the ask is. Because if that's the case, I may be asking for additional resources.
Sure.
And specifically because the sheriff and the district attorney are not supporting your efforts.
So your reference to the numbers of Santa Maria cases versus non-Santa Maria cases, so that was a point in time study where we took the total cases and we interviewed. We only captured data from cases that agreed to provide information. And it was quite a lengthy survey. So that's, that's the quote unquote skewing that you're referencing. With regards to my ask, if you go back to the recommendations, I think that the cases in Santa Maria continues to rise. If we look at what can we do better? As a county, what we, we don't without a vaccine, what we can do in stemming the tide is for now adhering to social distancing, adhering to face covering, and the practice, the diligent practice of hand washing. So if we can get support, we have pushed out that education. We have pushed out that education in numerous and creative ways. And I know that the city council has also spearheaded a face masking campaign, which was amazing. We need more of that. We need, we need more partnership in terms of having respectable leaders, respective leaders from the community to join the effort in that education effort. But education and enforcement goes hand in hand. And I am just sharing that, that we have code, we have codes, and we have health officer order. So not only are we needing to do, belong on the education, but we also need to do our enforcement piece. And I can tell you that public health, we have our, we have jurisdictional authority over restaurants. And so that is one area that our, our environmental health team has gone out, has done the education, and now have moved beyond that, especially for restaurants that, that we have gone and coached and mentored and provide education and resources. So now we are starting to issue notice of violation. And that is the type of enforcement that I am talking about. I think that the other, the other piece is coordination of services and efforts. So we have this patchwork of 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 services, of educational opportunities, of X, Y, and Z. And there just needs to be a coordinated effort, whether that be a hub, and a hub where the city can be aware of all the different efforts going on in Santa Maria. I think that would be a really good strategy as well. I also, I know that their Terry, as well as our ag commissioner, are on the phone, and they've also prepared comments. And I don't know how to give them the floor so that they can add their comments. And I think their comments will add to, to the questions that you raised.
Good morning, Mayor, or good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. This is Terry Nuss, Assistant CEO. I just wanted to add to Dr. DeRinozo's comments specifically about activities and what else can we do collectively? And where else the city of Santa Maria can also assist us in our countywide efforts? One of the things that we pursued very early on to ensure overall compliance with the requirements of the health officer order was a self-certification program for all businessers, all businesses in each sector that was allowed to be reopened as part of the reopening process. That process included a COVID-19 protection plan, which needed to be prepared by every business, as well as that self-certification. As a way to enforce that certification, lightly enforce, we focused heavily on education and the development of ambassador programs. Initially, those were in place throughout the unincorporated areas of the county in which the county licensed businesses. We are very much encouraging all of our cities to begin ambassador programs as well, in conjunction with their code enforcement officers, so that we can ensure that A, businesses are aware of the need to have a protection plan in place as required by our health officer and the state of California, and then that they are actively adhering to that plan, and sufficiently not only complying with those plans, but then providing them with the education to ensure that remain in compliance, and then further down, if necessary, enforce those plans. So it really begins with having that education directly in the field. You may be doing that initially with your code enforcement teams. I'm not aware of that. But that is one of the critical components that we are requesting that all of our city partners begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Oh, here, I have a question for Ms. Soto.
Oh, it's, it's, when you mean the protection program, is, is that folks going to these businesses and looking at the, at the, what was it, the checklist form that they submitted to public health?
Yes, correct. There are two components to it. Before an individual business can complete the certification form or the self attestation, they are required to have and construct and keep on file in their business a COVID-19 protection plan. And that includes everything from ensuring that the employees are appropriately trained on how to maintain social distancing, hygiene requirements, to actual practices that each businesses, business must maintain in order to be safe. They differ among the various sectors. As an example, a retail shop protection plan would vary dramatically from a grocery store's protection plan. But they are all required to have a plan on place and on file with their workplace. And the checklist then is a summary of each of the actions that they have agreed to take and adhere to.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
Yes, Dr. Rinozo, I had a question about specimen gathering. If we just do single specimens, one per person, it's laborious, there's a lot of people to test, it's expensive. There's an alternative to that, and that's called pool of specimens, where you might take a swab of 10 people, mix them together, and then just do one test on it. That way you could come up with 10 negatives instead of 10 single negatives. Is the county doing anything about specimens? Or is that at the state level?
I know that, I'm not aware of that. At our testing sites, we are doing individual, as well as in our outbreak testing, we're doing individual.
Dr. DeRinozo? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. DeRinozo, in regards to the code that you were, that you referenced, that stipulates that cities and peace officers, I mean, local city or cities would be able to have peace officers, what was it, enforce, thank you, enforce your public health recommendations or guidelines. Does that include pulling business permits? Because how else would we be able to enforce it?
You know, I am uncertain about your question. I don't want to give you the wrong answer. So if I can add that to my list of follow-ups, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Mr. Stilwell?
Yeah, the police powers of the city would include that, as well as other mitigations up to impacting the business license. And I, I think the challenge we've had is being able to get the consistent information, work cooperatively with the county health department in understanding where the challenges are that we do need to work cooperatively on. We've tried a number of different ways with unified command and with trying to have information conveyed in different settings. I think Dr. Rinozo mentioned the hub approach, which if that's an approach that'll work, we're all for doing that. I'd like to learn more about that. I think the challenge we see is, they have a team up here doing their work, we have a team up here doing our work, based on their health order and their health guidance. And it's a challenge for us to both be running after the same issues when resources are tight, if the pandemic is real and the cases are growing. So it's, if we can better coordinate that outreach or that information sharing for us to be able to align resources, that would be better.
And, you know, I certainly would agree. I, I think it's, it's sort of waste of time and energy when you've got someone coming up here and we don't even know about it. And that really disturbs me. It makes us look foolish that there are things going on. And, you know, initially, when we started these meetings that we were Zooming and teleconferencing, the question I asked when all these rules came down, I said, who is going to do the enforcement? And I was told, public health. And, and I relayed that to you also, Jason. And so, and now we're being told our policemen, our policemen and our code compliance are going to be doing this. Are there any questions here? Okay.
I do have one.
Yes, Ms. Waterfield.
I will have one for Dr. Rinozo. And this is with your outreach efforts. You, you stated that you started your meetings on March 24th. How many meetings have you had altogether since then?
So for, in that, we had, it was every Friday morning. And until recently, I want to say until June, we moved to every other Friday.
So then you have a slew of information that has not been disseminated to any of the city leaders here that need this information to know what the heck you guys are doing? I mean, what's, what's the use of doing this if you're going to keep it to yourself and not share it with those who are down here, live here, and we work on the ground?
I, yeah, unfortunately, so we have, we have ledge calls every week or every Thursday. And that is information that I have shared both at the board and on ledge calls about the task force and the efforts of the task force.
And I, I've been on those ledge calls every week, so I know that is accurate.
And I'm on the Friday calls.
Mayor Patino, may I, may I add something? It's Terry Nuss.
And that needs to be given to all of us, too, as well.
Yes, go ahead, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to answer and address a question that was alluded to a moment ago, and I believe brought up by one of your earlier speakers. For individual businesses or individuals within the community to file a complaint about a business that may not be practicing what is in their self-certification and required by the health officer order, we do have our ready SBC or recovery, recovery SBC website. Under the reopening section, there is a COVID-19 complaint form. Any individual can indicate what industry that they are reporting a concern about, provide the address of the business and the name of the business, and the alleged violation. We then compile that and through our planning department and distribute that out to the various code enforcement officers. So not many folks might be aware that that exists. I just wanted to make sure it was mentioned so that folks in your community are also aware of that resource as well.
Thank you.
The other thing is, the The other thing is, the task force meetings on Fridays are open to the community, and I know that various elected officials have sent staff. So if you are interested in sending any staff or you yourself would like to attend those task force, that is something that definitely we can, I can send you the information.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding the complaint form that was just mentioned, is there a simpler way that people would be able to submit complaints, like a hotline?
Yes, we do have a couple different components in addition to this. We do have a call center, and I can get that number for you quickly and make sure we have it by the end of this, by the end of this discussion. On the complaint form, however, we do also have a place to place photos and actually submit. In addition, we do have an email website that Dr. DeRino could provide that is specific to the restaurant and food service industries. So there are three ways to provide information about businesses that may not be complying with the health officer orders.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I have a question for our city staff. I've been, and this question is more so for Tiff Hampson. I've heard complaints of our peace officers not wearing face coverings when going out to service calls. Are we mandating all of our city employees to wear face coverings when out in public? I mean, if we are collaborating with Allen Hancock College to, you know, promote the importance of face coverings and wearing them appropriately, it's important that we as a city demonstrate leadership in that, and so I would like to see if that's not happening for it to start happening.
Yeah. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. All of our officers are equipped for PPE, and they are asked to wear it whenever practical or they can. And I have left that open to some degree because when you're communicating with people under sometimes exigent circumstances or emotional circumstances or different things, if they think that it's more effective to not wear that mask or if there's a safety consideration, then I give them the latitude to go without that. So it can be a tough, you know, be a tough call sometime, but I keep an eye on it, and I see them wearing them all the time, and wear them in all ways at work, or they're wearing them out in the field when they eat, do things like that. But there are some times in contact, so I feel it's safer and probably more effective to have face-to-face contact with people.
Right, right. And I hear your point, but I do believe it's important that we demonstrate leadership, and so I know that we just received a mask donation of PPE, and so I think it's important that we ensure that all of our employees when out working with the public are doing what they can to not only protect themselves, but our residents.
And then we have updated our citywide employee protocol, so they are wearing masks. We are following the latest state order to wear masks internally in areas where people aren't able to social distance or isolate, and wear them as they're doing their work out in the fields as practicable as the chief has explained.
Thank you. Okay, no further questions of Dr. Renoso out here. Pardon? Yes, Kathy Fisher.
Oh, hi, this is Kathy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Hi, Kathy.
Yes. Hi, Kathy. There we go.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you, Madam Chair, for your canceled feedback on some of the concerns and observations that you've been making, and I've been taking notes of that, and we'll be including that in the Ag stakeholder working group that we have that Dr. DeRino had mentioned. And also, as far as the agricultural community, there's been a tremendous amount of outreach that's been going on with not only the strawberry commission, the grower shipper, the avocado commission, a lot of guidance has come down from the CDC, CALOES, state public health, and as well as the California Department of Food and Agriculture, that's all been circulated. And I also want to mention, as Dr. DeRino mentioned, we have distributed over 100,000 surgical masks to the Ag community, and we just received another shipment of 100,000 surgical masks, and will also be receiving another shipment of N95, which have been very much in short supply for our Ag community. And that also includes staff at Allen Hancock with their agricultural programs that they have as well. So we're doing all that we can to help support the effort and really look forward to getting back to the stakeholder working group and sharing your feedback that you shared with us today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Ms. Soto has a question.
Commissioner Fisher, do you know of any reports of, or are you aware of any H2A workers coming down with COVID-19? I am particularly concerned and alarmed by what had been down in Ventura County and the city of Oxnard, where nearly 100% of H2A workers that live in a farmworker housing came down with COVID-19, and I worry that we're a ticking time bomb, knowing that we have one of the largest, we have a large number of H2A workers in the city of Santa Maria, and so what have you heard in that aspect here in our city?
I am aware of the incident that did take place in Ventura. I was speaking to the grower yesterday about it to get information. I'm not aware, I'm sorry, I do not have an answer as far as H2A workers and their positive cases in this county. That might be something more for public health to answer. As far as the housing situation for H2A workers, I think that's something more that Claire Wyman on the call could answer your question for.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, we can hear from Sue first. Sure. Sue Anderson from Marion Regional Medical Center.
Do you want to have Claire speak? You ready?
We're ready. Thank you, Sue, for being here.
Absolutely. You know, a lot of what I was going to talk about, I think we heard a lot through Dr. Renoso's presentation and all, but to add to it, it kind of goes along with what we're experiencing. You know, it's an interesting time, and just to go through the timeline a little bit, during the first, we saw our first COVID-positive patient, inpatient, mid-March. And then in April, our visits slowly climbed till early April, we had about 20 inpatients. And then by the end of May, we went down to about five inpatients, and we really thought, wow, we've got this, you know? Our numbers are way down, our ICUs available, we start opening up the hospital for general surgeries and everything. And then come June, the last two weeks, in fact, into July, we've seen an average of 6.5 patients per day being admitted to the hospital with COVID-positive needs. 30% of the patients we have right now are in ICU, we're at the highest level of patients we've had since this all started. You know, when you look at it, I mean, the good part is, is that the vast majority of these patients have gone home, they've been discharged from the hospital. The other day, just last week, we had a patient in who'd been there 97 days, and he was discharged home to his family, walked out of the hospital to the cheers of all the staff and all. So it's always heartwarming to see that. He was our longest patient yet, 97 days, three months being in the hospital, and you can just imagine, you don't get to talk to your family. I mean, we, you talk over iPads and all, but you don't get to see your family close up. So that was very rewarding to see him discharged. Our staff has been tremendous. I mean, we've had, right now, in the situation we're in, we're asking staff to work extra shifts, we're bringing on some outside travelers to help out with the load. We are able to handle the number of patients we have now. And thankfully, I mean, I really thank the community because what really happened was during the beginning of all this, we were given time to prepare. Because our numbers weren't that high, we were able to refit the old hospital with patient beds and get those rooms converted. We were able to purchase testing machines, so now we have several platforms to do testing on. We acquired all the PPE we need, all the protective equipment and all. So we're in good shape as far as all of that is concerned, and I thank the community because by really sheltering in place and all, we kept the numbers in the hospital down. It's a different story today with the number of cases we're seeing, and we're not seeing an end to it. And then with the Fourth of July weekend just behind us, we're afraid of what we're going to see over the next couple of weeks. We feel ready for it, we feel prepared, but, you know, on the other hand, what we really need from the community right now is what everybody said. We need people to be smart, we need people to wear masks, we need people to, you know, use hand sanitizer. The mask not only protects you, but it protects the person across from you, and that's the right thing to do. That's what we really need right now. You know, I get a lot of questions about testing. Testing is what everyone wants. I was on a call with hospitals throughout the state of California today, we're all dealing with the same thing. We're fortunate, at least we have testing equipment, but everybody's vying for the same reagents, the supplies to use to do the testing, and that makes them in limited supplies. So what we're really doing is, we are in our community right now, we are testing hundreds of people every single day, 500 or 600 every single day. And what we're testing are inpatients, every inpatient is tested, every patient that comes through the ED who exhibits symptoms is tested, every upcoming surgical patient, anybody having a surgery at any of our locations is getting tested prior to surgery. Our physician offices, if they have symptomatic patients, we're testing them, and all of our tests, we're able to do those tests within the same day. So we feel very good about that, but we also need to conserve testing supplies because we don't know about future orders and how readily we're going to be able to get the supplies. So that's why, you know, the state's testing sites are great for anybody that wants to get tested, but we're really trying to conserve and save our testing for those that really need to be tested, either because they're coming in for surgery, for something, for an inpatient, or that they're exhibiting symptoms. You know, when you look at testing overall, I think, in fact, the numbers I saw from the county last week were about 6.5% of our county, of, sorry, of Santa Maria, at our Santa Maria testing facility, about 6.5% are turning positive. That's up from about 4% at the beginning when the testing site opened. But what that also means is that 94% of the people being tested are negative, and so the vast majority are negative. You know, I know a lot of people out there are worried about that they're catching it or something, but if you mask and you use social distancing, the majority of people are not catching it. So, you know, I guess in closing, just, in fact, I heard something on the way here while I was coming here tonight, and it was a physician talking on a national level and saying that 45,000 lives could be saved in this country if people would just mask, you know, use masks out in public and use social distancing. And, you know, I believe that is probably true. So for our community, I think that's what we need to do. So with that.
Thank you. We have a question here. Soto?
I don't know if you could answer it, Dr. Anderson, or if Dr. Renoso on the phone, but I've been hearing talks about how the community-based testing here at the Santa Maria Fairgrounds has ran out of tests, and they're not, they're no longer taking appointments.
Yeah, we are not aware of that. I mean, that would be public health, but everything I know is that you can still make appointments, just, it's taking a while, and the results are taking a while because all of the testing, all of the labs are so impacted with all these testing sites that they are having problems getting through the volume.
Is she on the call?
I'm not aware of that either.
Oh, okay. So, okay.
I haven't, I haven't heard that either, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, Ms. Marco?
We are doing elective surgeries. Yeah, we've done a lot of hips and knees and all that. It's interesting, though, because people are, you know, some people are not going to their primary cares or getting the clearance they need to have surgery and all, and that's one of the things I recommend is that the hospital is very safe. We, I mean, to tell you how safe it is, you know, our employees and our physicians that are dealing with these patients every single day are not getting COVID, and so it's a very safe place. Everybody there is temperature checked every day, every day, everybody's masked, so you should feel comfortable being able to come into the hospital.
Any questions? Oh, Dr. Moats.
This is kind of a fellow's topic.
Would you talk into the microphone, please?
I read a quote in the Wall Street Journal that the U.S. has too many cases to control it, and that no matter what you do, it's going to expand and accelerate until we hit herd immunity, when 40 or 50% of the population has come in contact with the virus. What do you think about that?
Well, we've talked a lot about herd immunity and all, and I would tell you that our physicians feel in this area, herd immunity would be very difficult to get because we don't have the density of population where 45% of the population is going to get it. So, you know, the feeling they have is we're better off here trying to prevent giving it to each other.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sue, you mentioned the last several times that you've been coming here that our local facility, the hospital, Tignity Health, Marion, I didn't even want to call her anymore, that Marion has vets available in ICU, and that you've reconverted that wing of the hospital. And we have plenty of that space left today, right? Is that right?
We do.
Okay, and then you just said just a few minutes ago that we have a lot of the personal protective stuff, so with our, with our, with our needs here, we're in reasonably good shape considering the fact that we're going through this. Is that all right?
That is absolutely correct. We are in good shape, and we're able to take care of those patients while taking care of all the other patients coming in. The one caveat to that is, I'm concerned if we were to see double the patients we have now, I mean, as a community, we need to really try and stop the spread because we definitely have seen a major uptick. We've got twice as many patients now than we did at the beginning, and the best thing for us, we can hold good where we're at right now. We're hoping it doesn't go up a whole lot more than that. I mean, we're ready to take care of it if it does, but, you know, it would, we'd be in a lot better shape, and we could continue to do all the services if we can keep, keep it low, start the curve going down again.
I see. You know, I really haven't heard this put quite like this at the national level, but it just seems to me that society is a victim of itself. We're doing this to ourselves. We're, we're going out and we're, for one reason or another, one of us doesn't. We're, we're going out and we're, for one reason or another, one of us doesn't maintain the social distancing, we end up getting it transferred to someone else. So I think society is kind of manifesting this our own self. It's not something, I mean, some evil monster didn't jump out of the sky and give this to us. We're doing this because we're, somebody's not following all the directions. Is that about right?
I would say so, yeah. I, I mean, it, it spreads through droplets to each other, so the only way it's happening is, is people getting in close contact and those droplets transferring from one person to another.
So the answer is education?
We believe so. We put out a lot of public service announcements. We've been trying, we tried to flood the market with them before Fourth of July, so people would be smart about it, and hopefully they were. You know, so yeah, I think, I think education, I think people, I know everybody, you know, so many people hate to wear masks, and I get it. We all, none of us really like it. But it's important we do it right now, and let's get the curve back going in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sue.
I think what's been so difficult is we've had graduations, we've had Mother's Day, we, Memorial, Memorial Day, Mother's Day, Father's Day, and Fourth of July. I mean.
Dr. Moats, you had a question?
Yeah, Ms. Anderson. I've been reading about these curves, and as you know, the number of new cases newly diagnosed is going up, and the number of patients required to be admitted to the hospital for oxygen is going up. Yet, the death rate has been going down. And I've heard a couple explanations for that. But I wonder, how is the death rate doing at Marion Medical Center?
You know, we've had very few deaths, and, and I would say that the majority were related to a certain outbreak in a nursing home here. And those patients came to us very late in the ga, you know, after they had been very sick with, with it. So that was very unfortunate. We hated seeing that. Other than that, I think you're right. I think as time has gone on, we've gotten, we've gotten more and more information across the country on how to treat this. We found out, you know, people do better on their stomachs, laying on their stomachs. We found, you know, we've got blood plasma, we've got remdesivir, we've got all these things. There's no miracle drug right now, there's no miracle treatment that people are recovering quickly from. But certain things are working for certain people, and that has definitely helped. So we're not seeing even, the, the one good thing, too, I would say, is that we're not seeing the number of ICU patients. I mean, we're, our ICU patients today are comparable in number to the ICU patients we had at the beginning. So right now, we have a lot more people that aren't on ventilators in, in compared, in comparison. You know, more people are on med surg and telemetry than in critical care, than in ICU.
Sue, I got to ask you a question. Do we have people from San Luis Obispo County in the hospital here?
Yes, we do. I did, I took a look at it the other day, and this was when we had lower numbers, but it was about, it was about 10% were from Nopomo.
Which is, you know, that's, this is the community they use for a lot of things, and they use this hospital, too.
Now, the numbers, when we report our numbers to the county, they're taking, they're only reporting Santa Barbara County numbers.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Moats?
Just another question, Ms. Anderson. I've heard that the census of COVID-19 cases at AG too. And that's because every time someone, the hospital, they, they, Marion, all of those are A.G.?
Well, I will tell you, we take care of all patients at AG, too. But what's been happening, what we decided early on, was that we have round-the-clock intensivists at the Marion, at Marion Regional Medical Center, 24/7 intensivists. And really, we feel that's, that's the best for these patients to have, we have 24-hour hospitalist and 24-hour intensivist. And so we, we just felt that for the sake of the patient, it'd be better to, to move them to Marion and to leave AG as a non-COVID campus. So that's what we.
I think that's a good idea.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Thank you so much for being here. Okay. Claire Weinman's on there.
Yes, are you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for sticking on there, Claire.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Claire Weinman. I'm the president of the Grower Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo County. We would like to thank the city, county, and our community partners and agricultural colleagues for their tireless efforts to provide outreach on COVID prevention and response. We share the same goals of protecting our community and employee health and moving through the pandemic as quickly and safely as possible. This has been a tremendous undertaking for all of us. We've made a lot of progress and some major shifts as businesses and a community, and we applaud everyone's efforts to continue to adapt quickly. We also acknowledge that this can be challenging as the best available information continues to evolve. We would like to speak briefly to our efforts since March to provide outreach and education to our members on federal, state, and local information. This has included numerous member outreach webinars, phone calls, informational emails, and links to current local, state, and federal guidance, employee leave, outreach materials, and regulations. Would also like to thank our agricultural partners at Western Growers and the California Strawberry Commission for their development of excellent outreach materials in multiple languages and multiple formats. I wanted to note on the earlier questions that this outreach does include for all employees, for both domestic and guest workers, and that the state and federal guidance does include, as mentioned, kind of the checklist of different practices and different, against both at the state and federal level for, you know, thoughts on the COVID prevention response plans, symptom screening, workplace precautions, which does include best practices for transportation. We appreciate the county's efforts to better understand the tremendous amount of data that's been generated. We also look forward to further refining our understanding and sorting out causation versus correlation, including whether case numbers might correspond to R2 and R3 housing zones, family gatherings, and what the baseline demographic information is, especially for the city of Santa Maria compared to the entire county. We continue to provide outreach on the county's availability of isolation housing to essential employees, including farm workers, and have increased our outreach to employers and employees on safety considerations during non-work hours, especially before holiday weekends. We remain a committed partner in providing outreach to our members and employees and look forward to working together with our community and agricultural partners to achieve our shared goals of health and safety while continuing to provide fresh fruits and vegetables to our country during this time of great need. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Any questions? Dr. Moats?
Yeah, Ms. Weinman, you talked about maybe trying to assist the farmworkers to avoid getting into risky behavior after hours. Now, after hours, they can pretty much do whatever they want. So how would you restrict their activity so that they would have less of a risk of getting COVID-19?
That's a great question, and, you know, there's certainly a very clear distinction. You know, they're, during non-work hours, it's, it's beyond the control of the employer, and, and it's, it's, you know, they're, they're free to do as they want. I think the distinction is that in the latest Cal OSHA guidance and the California, it's certainly the Cal OSHA guidance, I believe it's also in the California Department of Public Health and the CDPH, it's, there was a joint publication that specifically calls out for employers to reach out to employees about health and safety practices during non-work hours. And so that's been part of the component. We've, again, provided outreach about the current guidance about gatherings in particular. So it's, it's been an ongoing process of providing safety at the worksite, and then also more recently, extending that outreach to remind employees about health and safety practices during non-work hours.
So you make constructive suggestions, but there's obviously no enforcement.
Yes, so we, we continue to provide proactive outreach, and, and it's, it's definitely a challenge, and every situation is a little bit different. And so we've been trying to compile those resources and, and make those available.
I think, I, I mean, I would just, to your point, Dr. Moats, I would say that the enforcement should be on the employer's side, more so than the employee's side. I mean, if we, if, if that is something that we believe, right, like, if people, if people are, I mean, it's community spread. If people are going to the grocery store, they can get it there. If people are gathering, like my neighbors did during Fourth of July weekend, they, they can get it there, right? So this is really community spread, and so I think that this is where it's going to be crucial for the workplaces to ensure that the spread there is minimal, so then the spread also community-wide is, is lessened as well. As, as Claire mentioned, it's, it's, we, we cannot enforce or tell people what to do or not do after work hours, but we do know that this is communal, it's, it's spread community-wide, right? And so, yeah, challenge. I, I believe it's more of a reason for employers to want to put in place practices so that it doesn't spread.
And if I may, there, there, again, even long before there were even state guidelines, we had been implementing best practices from USFDA, the Food and Drug Administration, from the US Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And so we've, we've been proactively providing that outreach and information.
Ms. Weinman? How many growers do you, are, do you have right now? How many ag growers are you, are you working with right now?
See, our membership includes, we have approximately 170 members, and of that, approximately, I believe, 100, or, I think maybe 70 to 80 of those are growers and farm labor contractors.
Claire, I didn't hear that. You said growers and what?
Farm labor contractors.
Oh, okay.
That, that's off the top of my head. I'm more confident in the total membership association is 170.
Okay. On these contractors, are these workers picked up in vans and transported?
There are different transportation arrangements in, in some cases. So there's, there's a variety of, of different modes of transportation.
What is the protocol on the vans? Or do you know?
There is guidance, and that's something that we're going to be looking at providing a refresher in terms of outreach.
Okay.
Both including transportation for a non-work hour, so that's something that we're going to continue to provide outreach to our membership on, is reminding of, reminding members of what those current practices are. But some of the, there are a variety of, of measures that are being implemented. There's, and there's different situations, but of, most of the situations that I'm aware of, there, again, is proactive, you know, encouragement of, of the best practices that we're aware of.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Hi, Claire, it's Etta. What kind of COVID testing do you give the H2A workers before they cross the border?
I'm not aware of if there's, I don't know that there's guidance that's, for example, mandating testing at the time of entry. Also, you know, there were different points in time in which the guest workers arrived. And I think one of the, you know, some of the moving targets have been the availability of testing, and under what circumstances you were avail, or testing was available. And that really even now continues to change on a weekly basis, so.
Do you, do you think that there's going to, that's going to change, only because reading the background paper in regards to the Special Committee on the California-Mexico Cooperation, where the heaviness lies on the border, I would, I would hope that they would start testing the workers before they come in and, and make that one of the priorities of being able to come in.
And certainly, regardless of the case, there continues to be ongoing awareness of, of outreach on what potential symptoms are, the importance of reporting those symptoms if, if you have cause for concern, and then, and then against kind of self-screening and for, for potential symptoms.
Yeah, because we, you know, they're, they're wanting us to increase our enforcement over here, but we've got to make sure we increase enforcement there as far as, you know, not being lackadaisical in one area and then causing a situation in another area. So hopefully, that's something that can be discussed with some of your committee.
Dr. Moats?
All farm labors in the Santa Maria Valley have different protocols. Some are stringent, others. This is the protocol for one farm labor contractor relative to vans, the question you asked. Each morning before the start of the workday with gloves, hands, disinfect band door handles inside and out, the steering wheel, radio, or any other surface that coworkers might come in contact with, use the disinfectant product provided by the company. If you run out of disinfectant, contact the supervisor, HR representative, blah, blah, blah. We do this four times every day on every van, and that's transporting people from their place of domicile to fields back and from the Mexican border up to the Santa Maria Valley.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Moats. Okay. You know, wrapping this up, I'd, I'd like to read this email I received, and I've, I'm sure all of you have received a lot of emails, but I'd like to read this. "In 2016, 10,497,000 people died due to alcohol-impaired driving. Not wearing a mask is similar to drunk driving, and there's a good chance you'll make it home okay. But there's also a risk you might kill someone else or yourself. We impose penalties for disregarding the safety of others in this manner. With over 120,000 American deaths in a relatively short timeframe because of COVID-19, I believe these stiff, these same stiff penalties should be applied to those who refuse to comply with COVID-2019 safety protocols. I wear a mask to protect you. You wear a mask to protect me. Failing to do so is more dangerous than driving drunk and should be penalized accordingly. We don't tolerate irresponsible behavior with alcohol or drugs, but we should apply those same standards to this even more deadly pandemic. It is incumbent on those of us who understand the issue and recognize the danger to help, and if necessary, force those who disregard the safety of the others to change their behavior, just as we do with drunk driving." And I won't give his name because I didn't have his permission, but I just, I thought that was an interesting, interesting email. Yes, Ms. Soto?
Madam Mayor, yeah, before we wrap this up, I just, I mean, I just want to share how incredibly alarmed I am by how disproportionately Santa Maria is being impacted by COVID-19, and also by the, by the fact that we are seeing people of color being disproportionately infected by COVID-19 across the nation. Here in Santa Barbara County, we are seeing Latinx communities being impacted. We are seeing, from the slides of public health demonstrating, demonstrated to us today, that people of low incomes are being disproportionately affected by COVID-19. We are seeing that essential workers are being disproportionately affected by COVID-19. And I understand and hear the frustration that we have, you know, as to what agency has what jurisdiction to do what, to, to, to protect our residents. But I think that in this pivotal moment in time, we have to ask ourselves what we're going to do to help minimize the spread of COVID-19, and what we are willing to do as a city and as an, as a, as a governmental agency to protect the safety and well-being of all of our residents, especially the most vulnerable among us. When you see that people who live north of Federavia, south of Maine, west of Broadway, those are some of the most impoverished corridors in our city, and we need to do something about it. I believe that we need to take up Dr. DeRanoso's recommendations. up Dr. DeRinozzo's recommendations. We should spearhead a collaborative within our own city. I think that that's a great starting point where we work hand-in-hand with public health officials to ensure that there is no miscommunication and we know exactly what's happening and the work that's happening between both agencies. In regards to education, I think it's important that we work alongside Public Health to put out a mass media campaign, not just to educate our community members about COVID-19 and how to protect themselves because from what we saw in today's slides, people know that already. But it's more so about letting folks know what rights and protections they have. When I got a call this morning from a Santa Maria resident who works at an insurance company, her concern was her safety coming to work every day, but she cannot afford not showing up to work. When employee, employees are being told, well, don't show up if you don't like how we are, you know, managing the COVID-19 pandemic. When, when, when they are threatening with retaliation, whether it may be to lay them off, lay their whole crew off, when there's fear of them not having any supplemental income to, for them to have when coming down ill, that's only going to cause the furthering spread of COVID-19. And so I think it's fundamental that we, we engage in a mass media campaign along the county Public Health Department to address not just the recommendations of how to keep yourself safe, but also address the fears, the real fears and concerns that people have when it comes to access to healthcare, when it comes to deportation, when it comes to housing, and when it comes to income and them not being able to provide for their families. And I think it's also important for us to look at ourselves and ask ourselves, how much money are we willing to invest? How much resources are we as a city willing to invest? If the Public Health Department, if we feel that they're not doing enough, then who's going to step up? Are we going to let this city burn because nobody else is willing to step in? If we've been able to, you know, do as much enforcement as we have been with illegal fireworks, why can't we do something about this? And it feels as if, though, we are putting profits over people in this point in time. And that is unacceptable and we need to do more. And so I highly urge us to take on the recommendations that the Public Health Department has given us and that we use that as an opportunity to look at what resources we can put from our own, what resources we can, we can put forward to help minimize the spread of COVID-19.
Well, I think pretty much Mr. Stillwell said that he was willing to do the hug thing and to coordinate because we certainly realize we have to coordinate with Public Health because we can't be both going off in different directions and it's not going to accomplish things. And we certainly have to make a commitment, I don't think there's any question among any of us, that we have to make a commitment to do something up here, whatever is that something is when we coordinate, absolutely. And there are, you know, this is a whole new ballgame and, and there are many, many issues involved in this. And especially, it's very reasonable that some people are afraid to go to work and yet they have to go to work. So all these things, yeah, I didn't, I didn't want you to think that this was just over with tonight, absolutely not, because we really need to be proactive and figure out the best strategies and work with Public Health to get this done. It's just that it really bothers me when I hear Public Health is coming up here and I don't even know about it. Mr. Stillwell doesn't know about it. I'm thinking that's a waste of time and energy because we have to focus, all of us, on what we're going to do in our community. And I told Dr. DeRinozzo on the last phone call about, we all know people are living in high-density situations here and that's, that's not a quick fix for us. We all know we need to do something about housing and we know that. And I think this gives us probably a better idea of how we need to do, deal with housing here in the future. I mean, I don't think there's any question. Or public transit, or schools, or anything else that we do. So anyway, I will, I think you have sort of your marching orders, Mr. Stillwell, and you can figure out how to do this and work with our city attorney and so that we can coordinate this with Public Health. Thank you. Matt?
Mr. Cordero?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind the city attorney that early on in the dialogue tonight, it was mentioned something about taking a look and see what kind of adjustments or additions we could make to the H2A program about this. And I don't want to leave these people out, however, I don't want to put something on top of these people and then five years from now, we're doing, we're doing COVID testing and somebody say, why are you doing that? You know, I mean, that went out four and a half years ago. So, so I mean, there needs to be some sort of a happy medium there. And earlier tonight, we were talking about our city employees and whether they're wearing masks, particularly with the police department people. Is it still correct, Mr. Stillwell and any other managers that are here, directors, we still have a very small number of city employees that are affected with COVID-19? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
I would only, I would only suggest that having that as a known result, that we must be doing something correct with regard to the use of the mask and, you know, plus being very lucky as well. But, but if we have very small numbers of our city employees in what we can all readily admit is a hotspot in the county, we must be doing something correct much of the time that we're, that our employees are out there doing it. And that's, that's probably attributed to all of these fine people sitting here that are, that are in charge of a number of people below them. So, so thank you very much for your efforts and what we're doing. And I just hope that we can, if there's something we can do with regard to H2A and tighten that up for these, these people. It's not a matter of wanting to have something else to enforce. It's a matter of doing something to protect these people from this, this terrible monster of COVID-19. Thank you.
Well, as you heard, I didn't mean to interrupt you, as you heard Sue Anderson say at the hospital, those people that are, not, not that our firefighters are, and our police officers and our A people aren't on the front line, but those people are dealing specifically with COVID patients. And they're doing something right there. You know, so the hand washing, the face masking, and the social distancing. I don't know how much social distancing thing they can do there, but, okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there's something, oh, I'm sorry, it's going to be quick, I promise.
Okay. Sure.
Just going off of what Councilmember Cordero mentioned, I think it would be during one of these, once we kick off these collaborative meetings within the city and Public Health or the city, it'd be, I would like to hear or revisit the, the over-the-counter permitting process for H2A to see if maybe we can implement in there, weave in some sort of H2A testing policy or health standard or something. I mean, if we already have the over-the-counter permitting process, it could be easily woven in to that. So that's something that I would like to see.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Soto strongly about the need for H2A coronavirus testing. Again, I have some knowledge about a specific H2A organization in Santa Maria. And they follow very specific guidelines, many put down by the state of California. All of their employees have health insurance. If someone becomes apparently sick while they're on their job, they're immediately taken off the job, quarantined for a period of at least 72 hours. Then they are given a COVID-19 test. If the test's negative and the situation resolves within 72 hours, they're permitted to go back to work. If the COVID test is positive, they're quarantined for 14 days, two weeks. During this time, they get 80 hours of sick pay. So they do get paid for being quarantined. At the end of that time, if they feel well enough, they can come back to work. Or if their contract's over, they return to their home country, but no one's deported. Now, I think we need to have some kind of a collective testing. That's why I mentioned this pool testing. You know, for an individual that wants to know if they're COVID-19 positive, of course, they have to be tested individually. But if you want to test a large population, you can do so by taking like 10 people, combining their specimen, doing one test on it. If everybody's negative, great, you've done clear 10 people. If it comes back positive, then you have to go back and test every single person. But you can save a lot of resources and expense of doing so many tests by these pool testing. There was an article in this morning's paper of Cornell University in Ithaca, New York, where they're trying to decide are they going to open their school to students actually attending it. And the way they're going to handle it is with this pool testing. And it seems to be the only reasonable way that they can do it. I think it might be applicable to H2A.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Stillwell.
Mr. Stillwell?
Dr. Stillwell?
Yeah, from the.
Doc, I heard it. No, that concludes our presentation. We do have clear direction. We've agreed with the recommendations that Public Health had, the fact we've been asking for them and working on that same path. And parallel, it'd be nice to bring the efforts together and we'll continue to work with them to do that.
Madam Mayor, I just, I just have one comment, you know, and we're talking about the H2A testing. That needs to be done from the very start, from, before they come over the border. If they don't do that, we are allowing all of this to come to us. So we need to get a hold of maybe our congressperson or whomever to stop it at the point where it gets over. Because we can sterilize, we can do everything we want, but if you're going to allow it to come in, what's the point? And then once we get, they get tested over here, so I think it needs to go up to a higher level because then we're just going to be throwing money away. And we just, we need to catch it before it just comes in.
We just really need to know what they're doing and how they're doing it.
Absolutely.
And when they're doing it. Okay. Okay, you have your marching orders. Okay.
Carlos, Carlos Castaneda would probably know, you have his number? Yeah, he would probably know if they're doing it and if not, who to contact so that, so that that pressure can be brought to bear on that. And, and I would think that, I would think they'd want to do that also. I mean, it, it lets, it lets us know that they're clean coming in. That doesn't mean that they couldn't, they couldn't get tested at 10 o'clock in the morning and then get it at 3 o'clock in the afternoon while they're in the United States. But, but at least we know that when they got here, they were clean.
Councilman Cordero, I think that it's the standard policy to not test people at the border before they come in. They do a temperature screen, they look at the person if they seem to be obviously ill, then they wouldn't permit them in without testing some, I guess, or just not let them in. But it's not routinely done at the border.
So it's after they get in?
Yeah, after, and only if they appear to be sick.
Only when they're sick. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so everyone wash your hands, mask up, practice safe social distancing.
And sanitize.
Well, wash your hands. Okay. I just don't feel clean with the sanitizer. I have to wash my hands. Anyway, the next item here would be report by city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next meeting of the city council is July 21st. The main item on that agenda will be the first reading of the Rivergate-Romer Specific Plan, General Plan Update and Zoning Amendment. And that's the parcel of land that's on the north side of town, just east of the freeway at Broadway. So across the freeway from Harley-Davidson there, that open piece of land there by the levee with a couple billboards on it. And so it'll be an important piece for us to look at of updating the general plan, the specific plan, and how that northern, eastern side of the city develops into the future. And that's scheduled for the next council meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So let's do reports, oral reports of council members. And Dr. Moats, shall we start with you?
Well, I don't have much of a report again. I did listen on that conference call with the health authority people in Santa Barbara on Monday. But sometimes I have difficulty with modern technology and muting myself. But I got this, somebody sent it on my mic. My mic spelled wrong. Otherwise, no report.
Thank you.
Well, being guilty of Mike's assistance while he was in the meeting, I attended that as well. And also a CCWA meeting.
Ms. Soto?
The only reportable item on my agenda is the airport district meeting that Dr. Moats and I attended with Jason on Wednesday, June 17.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I did the Ben Hayes Show after the last council meeting. I also attended the opening of the park out at, at the Presker Park. I thought that's really unique.
Isn't that wonderful?
It was, it was great. I had a Zoom meeting with CAC. We're kind of running into some issues with regard to COVID, but we're trying to do some branding changes there with CAC and, and hopefully expose it to more, CAC itself, to more people in the community. And I think that's, that's really about it for me. Thank you.
So on June 17th, I attended Presker Park where they did the inclusive playground ground opening. On June 18th, SBK monthly board meeting in the morning and the APCD board meeting in the afternoon. And then the weekly meeting of key leaders on unifying recovery efforts. And then legislative briefing call on COVID. And that's the legislative call is the one we do, we do weekly. On Friday, the 19th, I attended the call with Assemblyman Cunningham and the Santa Barbara stakeholders. On the 22nd, I did a Zoom meeting on the Crime Survivors Resource Center and again, the REACH Weekly Leaders Town Hall. On the 23rd, I did the local leadership in times of crisis webinar, and that was worthless. On the 24th, I did the Marion Foundation Board of Directors and then the RISE Team Leaders Update with Public Health Director. On the 25th, the weekly meeting of key leaders unifying recovery efforts and the legislative briefing call regarding COVID-19. On the 26th, again, Assemblyman Cunningham briefing call and then the leadership, oh, did the drive-through graduation for Leadership Santa Maria Valley. And that was great, where we stood there with the banner and people that graduated from Santa Maria Leadership, Santa Maria Valley Leadership drove up the top part of the parking lot, parking structure. And June 29th, did the Santa Barbara County COVID information update. On the 30th, the July 1st, did the summer recess obsession briefing on priority bills and current event issues and webinar for mayors and at the National League of Cities. And that afternoon, updated the Santa Maria Key Leaders Call. On July 2nd, the weekly meeting of key leaders. And I did the structural violence and trauma in the Black community webinar during all this and the legislative briefing call. And on the 7th, I did the Ben Hayes Show this morning. Any other comments? Anything? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.